The commissioners now back in session. Next on the agenda would be Mr. Allen Pierce, Restore Coordinator Report.
Morning commissioners, I have a fairly straightforward report, there's a couple of these one letter out when we want to get to it. First, I'd provide board with a memo sent to all the Triumph applicants regarding the board capping its support for first round project of $2 million. I've also called Ms. Susan Skeleton, Triumph Board Executive Director and advisor of the same. I asked her if I could make a statement directly to the Triumph Board on March 16th, which is their next meeting on this issue, and she said I could. So I want to read to you now the letter I've written for chairman's signature that I would read to the Triumph Board. It's second page in my packet. The first page is the memo that I sent to all the applicants, and I'm not going to read that, I will read the letter. It's to Chairman Gates. Dear Chairman Gates, the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners informs the Triumph Board that the county commission has voted to put a ceiling of $2 million per applicant on its support in the first round of applications. The county respectfully requests the Triumph Board to support the county on this request. At this time, five applicants from the county have submitted Triumph pre-applications. They are the County, the City of Appalachia, the City of Carabel, the Franklin County School District, and FSU. The county has asked each of these applicants to prioritize their projects and to present no more than $2 million worth of projects to the county for letters of support. The county is doing this so that some Triumph funds are reserved for future projects or to expand projects that appear to be exceeding economic impact. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact, please feel free to discuss this with me, Mrs. Monkey Pierce, or Mr. Allen Pierce, Franklin County Restore Board there. So if the board likes that tone, then I would ask you all to tell me to send it, to give it to the chairman at the meeting.
Pleasure to the board.
Second.
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so that takes care of the letter. Then, my second paragraph, item number one. On a related issue, after I wrote the memo to the applicants, I realized that since we are asking the applicants to prioritize their own project list, the board may not want to spend an afternoon listening to the presentation of all 13 projects. So does the board want to schedule a workshop, or do you want to wait and see if the applicants submit a priority list in accordance with the $2 million funding cap? If they do, then I would report that list to the board, and the board can act on that list without a workshop. I have not given the applicants a deadline to provide the listed priorities for the board to consider. So I need board direction on the deadline. If you want to do a deadline, see if they respond, I would recommend April 2nd, so that I could then present the information to the board at April 3rd meeting. So it's just whether you want to have a workshop now, you want to set a workshop now and listen to the applicants, or you want to see if they respond to your directions, and then you don't have to have a workshop. It's really up to you all, it's just a matter of how much you want to get involved.
Comments from the board?
I would like to know what be going on.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm just speaking for myself.
So you'd like to have a workshop?
Yes, I would. I bet people gonna be asking me on the street, and I need something to tell them.
Okay.
I make a motion as I have a workshop.
I'll get with Mr. Marone, but do you want to maybe think about having it on April 3rd, afternoon of April 3rd then? That meeting there?
And you need to figure out if we're going to look at all 13 projects, or we're just going to look at the projects that they're going to submit wanting board support?
The projects that they're going to submit, aren't we?
What's up to y'all? What's up to y'all? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. The ones they want our letter of support for, okay.
You have...
And the way I would look at it is do whatever, I mean, you know, see what they're going to submit.
Okay.
And then if, you know, later on down the line, they want us to submit, you know, something else, we'll look at that at that time.
Okay, okay.
Don't y'all think?
Well, in reality, they can submit every project they got.
Right.
But only one project with a $2 million cap will be going forward with a check in the box that the county supports the project. That does not stop the projects from going forward, and if Triumph wants to fund them, then they can.
Of course, you may have more than one project, as long as they don't exceed the $2 million cap.
Right, right.
All I'm saying is I just don't want to be out there and somebody asking my question.
Okay.
And I don't know.
I mean, we can look at all of them if y'all want to.
It sounds good, we'll look at them because I'm like, you know, if somebody asks, we'll know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, it's only 13, so it's not like an all-day deal. If you gave everybody 10 minutes, that's two hours there and 130 minutes. So, you know, it'd take a couple hours to do them all, but we can do 13 in an afternoon. And I would say do it in the afternoon of that April 3rd meeting.
I recommend commissioners, you do it at the first meeting of the month, because the second one always runs long. You've got P and Z, Board of Adjustment, sometimes. I mean, I know you guys remember two, a meeting ago, how long we were here, so, you know, to avoid that, I would recommend first meeting in April, or if it's May, too late.
No, May's not too, there's not really a deadline, we can do, we can do May.
I made the motion to do it the first meeting in April.
Second.
And that to your motion, you'll be in your second.
I'm in my second.
We got a motion and second on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, I will say, if somehow that's a conflict with the applicants, they say, oh, we're not ready, then we'll put it back a month to the first meeting in May. But I'll, we'll shoot for this, and I'll let you know next meeting. Okay, good deal. Item number two, inform the board that Ms. Erin Griffin, Finance Officer, and I went to Tallahassee on February 23rd, Friday, February 23rd, for a lengthy meeting with FDOT regarding airport grants and funding. Franklin County has certain standing in the state that many airports do not have, because while there are over 500 airports in Florida, we are one of only 129 receiving federal funding. The federal government recognizes the location of the county airport has value to the national aviation system, and that is why we receive federal and state funding. The Carabel Airport is trying to get on the same status as the county airport, but right now Carabel only receives state funding. At the meeting, we learned the county airport manager cannot receive grant funds as part of his airport manager compensation. I have informed Mr. Jason Puckett of this. Ms. Griffin and I are looking at alternatives for funding the airport manager position, and we will come back to the board with a recommendation. But I just wanted to let you know that that has changed. On a related note, the FDOT did issue a time extension for the access road project until June 30th, 2019, which is a year of its extension, and I provided board a copy of that letter for the file.
Alan, real quick on the airport manager's position, I think Jason's done us an excellent job, keeping things organized and keeping things moving forward. So I support your efforts in trying to figure out some alternative funding for that airport manager position.
Okay, alright. We're looking at, and actually I talked to Jason yesterday, he gave me an offer that what he thought was fair, and it's pretty fair. So I'm going to talk to Erin, then I'll come back to you all.
Okay.
Well, now let me ask you something. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have we been paying him out of grant funds?
Yeah, he was getting 1%, just like the previous airport manager was getting 1%.
Okay, but he can't get that no more?
No, no.
Did y'all know that?
No, we did not know it. We've been doing this for 20 years, and it was never brought out, the DOT never complained about it, they signed off on all of these things. But then, they had a review from the federal level, and this came to light, and they said, we can't be doing that.
We're going to fix it, huh?
Going to fix it.
Okay, good.
You're not punishing us, it's just, Kate, we can't do it anymore in the future.
Well, how are you getting paid now?
Well, he was getting a stipend of $1,000 a month plus 1%, so we will have to, and I can't tell you the number, what the 1% came to. It wasn't tens of thousands of dollars, but it's something we need to see if we can compensate him in lieu of that 1%. Alright, number three, board action allowed me to attend a Triumph Restore Coordinator meeting in Shalamar on March, I had 10th there, but it's probably March 12th, with representative of all the other eight counties. This is intended to be a staff-level meeting. Santa Rosa County has called this meeting, they really want everybody to attend, so if you'd like me to go and see whatever, what's up, then please direct me to go.
I make a motion for you to go.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
It's, we went somewhere near Destin, I'm not really sure where it is.
That's not Destin.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
And I say right to you, I don't know if there's something up, because March 12th is only four days before the March 16th Triumph Board meeting, so I don't know. I mean, I just don't know, there must be something that everybody's working on.
Something's going on, maybe they're calling you.
Right.
Because I saw the email that you received, they're calling for all of y'all.
Right, that's correct.
All eight counties, there's something, it may be something with the stand-up, you know, FEP, I don't know.
I don't have any idea. Alright, that's number three. Number four, provide board with a signed copy of PW 228, which is the $3.2 million of construction funds to rebuild the Alligator Point Road. The board and the residents of Alligator Point need to remember that while the county did receive a partial waiver of the local match, if construction design costs reach the maximum funds obligated by FEMA, the county still has a match requirement of some $225,000. The match will come out of the Ballpoint Trust Fund, and this will cut the trust fund in half. There might be, so after we pay all that, there might be less than $225,000 of funds left in the trust fund. And at this time, there is no method of putting money back in the trust fund. Any other significant storm event on Alligator Point could easily wipe out the fund, and then all the repair costs will have to come out of the road department, a budget which is not designed to handle such costs. So I just want to keep reminding everybody of the path we're on, because if we get another storm, it's going to be bad. So I say this to you all, just as a sort of introduction for number five. Alligator Point Traffic Study. As the board is aware, $20,000 of Ballpoint Trust Fund money was allocated at the February 20th meeting to pay for a larger, more accurate traffic study on Alligator Point. As recommended by the representative apt, the county authorized CNM associates to prepare this study. I have received a proposal from CNM and have reviewed it. Initially, the proposal did not include an assessment of frequent user toll rates, but in a telephone conference with CNM, I asked that it be included. So I have attached a revised project proposal to my report. I believe the board thinks this $20,000 study will be conclusive on our proposed toll rate, and this is not the case. The $20,000 study will analyze already collected data that will be run through a series of computer models. The only traffic data currently available is data collected by FDOT where traffic turns on the US 98, from, off US 98 onto Alligator Drive. There is no data further down where Ballpoint, Alligator Point split, nor their accounts on residents versus day trippers versus renters versus boat traffic trailers, et cetera. In order to get data accurate enough for a conclusive recommendation of toll rates, this type of data will have to be collected throughout a long enough period of time to generate a reliable annual traffic count. The CNM staff said the board could be investing up to $100,000 to collect data and get an accurate model of traffic on Alligator Point. I do believe this $20,000 study will provide a better analysis of the traffic on the point, but until the board goes to level a study that creates additional data, I do not believe the feasibility of the toll road will be resolved. I say that because one of the assumptions of the white paper and of this study is that we count the traffic to Ballpoint State Park. I have called the state park to find out their opinion on whether they would support or oppose a county toll road. If they oppose a toll road, then the toll gate would essentially be moved down to the split between Ballpoint and Alligator Point, and the only traffic subject to the toll road would be Alligator Point. While I don't have the data to support my opinion, I believe there will not be enough traffic on Alligator Point to support the cost of a gantry and provide additional revenue to help maintain the road. What I think the point residents want to know is what a proposed toll rate would be, so they can help evaluate whether they would support a toll or an MSTU to help generate funds to maintain the Alligator Point Road. The revised CNM study will have an estimate of that, but it will include the assumption that the toll booth would include Ballpoint State traffic. If the park's general subject to a toll road, then the study will not be providing a meaningful toll rate. I believe we should get a confirmation from the park on their opinion of a toll road before we proceed with the study. There's an after meeting on March 10th, and I'm willing to attend to discuss this, all of this, if the board wants me to. So I'm seeking board direction. And I say, I don't know if the state park has any authority to say, we couldn't put a toll road there, but, you know, it could be a big issue for the state if we put a toll road in front of their gate and affect their revenue stream and their use on a state park. I mean, I just don't know what their reaction's going to be.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh huh.
First of all, it was for up to $20,000, that's what my motion was, for up to $20,000. And there's no way that we're going to be able to put $100,000 into a more explicit study being done. I mean, the way I thought it was going to come back is they're going to have to see if it's going to be feasible to do a toll road, is the way they told us. Is that not what they told us?
Yes, but the problem is, what I think everybody wants to know, what are the rates going to be? Because that's, that's...
Not matter what the rates is going to be.
Well, it could...
You know, we have got to make the decision of whether we're going to have a toll road or not. And that's not, I mean, if you're going to put a toll road in, then you're going to have to put it, almost coming off of 98.
Right, that's the most logical place to put it, to capture the most traffic, but what if the state park says, you can't, you know, don't put a toll road there. What if they interfere, you know, object, and what if there are people in Sun and Sand or other places who don't even go to the point? We're going to be tolling everybody? I mean, there's some decisions impacting...
I think that's the reason why you need to go to the taxpayers' meeting down there on Saturday, because there's a lot of unknowns with this. I mean, I try to be supportive of what's brought before our board, you know, from the area that it's coming from, because I want to hear from the people. But, you know, I'm not liking what I'm hearing on these people. And then I looked in there, I looked in there, and the majority of their work that had been done, the CNM company, had been in Virginia and Texas and Georgia. I think they've got three, maybe four projects in Florida, and I'm saying, you know, I'm concerned with this.
Right, question, that's a...
Because one of the companies they're doing business in Florida with is maybe a conflict of interest, because it's ACCON.
Okay, I didn't know that.
You didn't notice that? See, I noticed all those little things, so I'm real concerned with this. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that would direct Allen to go down to the taxpayers' meeting on Saturday and compensate him for his time or whatever he has to do. And to see what's going on, and to follow up and bring it back to the board and let us know.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion?
Well, let me just say, Commissioner Sanders, you and I are in agreement on this, because what I think, what I, the message I don't want to kill is that I appreciate the people in Alligator Point recognizing that that road is a burden for everybody, and they're recognizing that they, there might be options out there to generate a revenue stream to help support that road. Because even though I have talked about a revenue stream necessary for beach or nourishment, I am not wedded to that idea. If there are other things that the point residents want to see down there, other than a beach, and they're willing to generate the revenue for it, then I'm open to it, because I feel like if you pay for it, you want to have the right to have some say on how that money's being spent.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm thinking they say something that's not going to be liked by anybody down at Alligator Point, but it looks like to me they're wanting to be a gated community.
Well, that's an aspect I want to, that's, Commissioner, that's an aspect I want to talk about, because a gated community is a concept...
That's what concerns me.
That you all have not expressed support for. I mean, we haven't really talked about a lot, but a gated community, you know, limits who goes in and out, and, you know, you have always expressed the desire to have the public down there.
Well, the thing that I look at the most is $75,000 and then $140,000 for maintenance. So all that's got to come off the top of this, of this traffic, of the toll.
That's part of the toll road, it gets...
So you're taking over $200,000 a year out just for the maintenance and to pay for the installation of the toll gantry, as you said. So that's, that's quite substantial, and if, and if this toll road don't work out, and you build this gantry, then Franklin County's going to be responsible for that for the next 30 years.
That's correct.
With no revenue to pay for that.
That's right.
Aside from keeping the road up.
Got a good sound.
Well, my, I don't understand why they want, you've got a toll way in the back to the front, when you come over.
Well, they would like that up front, and that's the most fair place to put it, but what if the state park says, and I don't know if they have the authority to object to us or not, but what if the state park comes to us and says, look, Franklin County, we invest a lot of money, public money, and now you're going to put a toll road up, and we don't think, we the state park, we the state of Florida, don't want you to put a toll road up. I mean, we, I don't know if they can stop us, but, you know, we still get a lot of money from the state of Florida, and I don't want to even get to an argument with the state of Florida over this.
Will you deal the Florida ticket over?
Well, that'd be an option I'd love to give them. That's right.
Go ahead, real quick, public comment's over, but go ahead.
Alan Pfeifer, I did talk to Paul Parker yesterday, and I think it's, Paul would like, agreed with me that maybe take this off the table today. There's a new method that's come up just this week that would materially reduce the cost and change the economics of this potentially, and we'd like the time to be able to talk about that internally and maybe repropose even a different approach at the next county commission meeting.
Okay, he's going to go to the next meeting, so...
I'm going to come down anyway, I think, and just talk about this stuff.
So he's been authorized to go down there and...
Thank you.
Bring back the report to the board.
Yeah, because I'm just concerned, I don't care what method it is, I'm just concerned when you're giving that kind of money.
And in reality, Alan, we're making comments here that you can take with you when you go to that meeting. Concerns of the board, so that's all we're doing here this morning, is different people, different board members are addressing different concerns, and those concerns that need to be addressed when you go down there.
Well, and the big thing was, you know, you've got that, you've got, and that's what I've been trying to think it out in my mind, because west of the break, I know it's probably a little bit more now, but it, west of the break, what we call the break, down at Alligator Point, you have somewhere around 300, a little over 300 homes. I just don't see how that, you know, how a toll is going to help that much.
If you had a toll that far down, Commissioner, it would not be affordable. You'd be paying about, and I did a brief analysis and showed it to Paul Parker, and he agreed with the numbers. It would be about $1,700 a year with no break for anybody, if you had a toll down by the KOA. $1,700 a year per car, that's, that's too high. No one, they would not support that. I say that, I haven't asked them that number, but that's too high. Compared to an MSPU for that same small area, would be $500 a year. Because an MSPU captures everybody, not only houses, but all vacant lots. The toll only captures the people who use their property. And so, you know, depending on how you view this, you've got a lot of odd people who own property down there who have vacant lots, not paying anything. And I'm trying to maximize the number of people who pay. A toll road further up, where you capture more people, will capture everybody, day trippers and all that kind of stuff. But then, do you run into the problem with the state park? Or do you run into the problem of like Sun and Sand, where those residents, you know, are a different sort of category? They live in mobile homes on Alligator Point, and probably, you know, they're in a different economic status.
Well, I can tell you, I've had several calls in this past week from people out there in the Sun and Sand area that did not know what was going on, and they called just to, you know, see what was going on. And I told them that there was talks of a toll road, that there's studies was being done and everything, and I told them that they wanted to find out more, to go to the apta meeting this Saturday.
Okay.
And find out more. But anyway, do we have a second on that motion I made?
Yes.
Yeah, I made it.
Yeah, I think...
We have a motion and second.
Mr. Chairman, before we go, I'd like to make a comment. Since you are going down there this Saturday, I'm not, I'm not opposed to looking at a toll. I mean, I think we're all in agreement with that. I still have yet to figure out how you're going to take something that's going to cost you 200-plus thousand a year, and it's going to generate more revenue than an MSPU, that's going straight to...
The difference is, yeah, the reason the residents want a toll is that they, I mean, and I'll be blunt with you, it accomplishes two factors. One, it taxes those people who are just going down there for the day, who don't own property down there, who are using the road and leaving garbage behind, and, you know, and making a mess. So that captures those people that an MSPU wouldn't, because all you're doing there is taxing the property owners. They're trying to get a way to get the people who are coming to the point, who are using it, but not paying anything. So I understand that component. The problem is, I mean, we, there are public beaches down there, and it's, it depends on how, how the stance, and this is more of a philosophical approach to government, what stance do you all want to have for access points that would be behind a toll gate? I mean, you know, those are public access points that you all have built down there, and whether you want to let that toll gate, you know, limit that, or, you know, that's a philosophical deal. Do you put a toll gate up or not? You know, and that's something I can't answer for you all, you all need to decide that amongst yourselves philosophically. But that's another component of the toll that the residents clearly want. I mean, I say that on their behalf, they want to have some restrictions on the amount of day traffic down there, because it's nothing but an obstacle to them. They got to drive around, they got to pick up the trash, they got to deal with that stuff on a regular basis, and I understand that. But, you know, there are other ways of dealing it, and I'll just give you an idea. The county bought that property there, the old KOA. We could, with proper funding, direct traffic there and minimize the amount of traffic going down into the residential areas further on the point. I mean, there are some things that we can do to still have public access, but not have it invested and infiltrated into all that residential area down at the point. You know, there's a couple options out there. But you all philosophically may not want a toll road where people are now, you know, limited to going to the beach. But the residents definitely want that, because they want to redirect traffic to Ballpoint State Park. And that's my, sort of my conflict with the toll commissioner, that if you have the toll far enough up, then you don't accomplish that. If that's one of your goals, you want to get people from going to the point, go to the Ballpoint State Park, then bring the toll down, so that you get charged a toll when you go to the point and not to Ballpoint State Park, and let the, let the public decide for $2 or $5, or whatever it is, do I want to get a free trip to the beach at Ballpoint State Park, or do I want to pay that money and go through the toll gate to Alligator Point? I mean, then you have to move the gate down, so they make that decision.
Yeah, but I thought you just said that that wouldn't generate enough revenue to have it...
I don't think it would, but it solves their other problem, of they, at least the day trippers wouldn't go to the point. I mean, I don't know how much revenue it would generate.
I'm not trying to make it any more than it is, I thought the problem we're trying to solve is being able to fix the road.
Well, that's the problem I...
It's about day trippers, or, you know what I mean? And I still, and I'm not opposed to anybody, and I know it's going to be hashed out, I still don't know how we're wanting to do something that's going to cost us money versus something that's just straight revenue is a bad way to cover that. That's the only concern.
Well, I have that same concern, yes, I think the board does. Okay, well, we'll debate this a couple of times, I'm sure.
We do have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
I sent my report.
Next would be Mr. Michael Marone, County Coordinator Report.
Morning again, commissioners. My first item is the Weems report. As of yesterday, the operating account balance was $168,391. Taking into account pending deposits and the March 7th payroll, the balance on Thursday will be approximately $127,344. The money market, the balance in the money market account is $352,825. Weems is expecting $181,106 dish payment anytime soon. I don't have a date on that, they just, they told me soon. Last week, I sent you the draft version of the December 17th, 2017, and January 2018 financial report. Reports, if you have any questions, let me know, and I'll have the appropriate staff member from the Weems admin staff call you. Item B, at last meeting, the board approved changes to the Weems Board of Directors bylaws that would allow board, the board to appoint a staff member to the Weems Board. This member would serve as the chairman of the Weems Board. Attorney Schuler has made the necessary changes to the bylaws. Board action to approve the amended bylaws.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lackler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, there are three vacancies on the Weems Board of Directors that need to be filled. I've met with Mr. Michael Clark, who's willing to serve on the Weems Board as District 2 seat. Mr. Clark, Clark served as the school's district assistant superintendent for many years, and brings his administrative skill set to the board. I'll submit with Pastor David Walker, and he's willing to serve on the Weems Board, he will fill the District 3 seat. Those of you know, until his recent retirement, Pastor Walker served as the Health Department's Operation Manager and Public Relations Officer. His experience in those roles will bring health insight and knowledge to Weems Board. There is still a vacant at-large seat that needs to be filled, and current members with expires, and their current members with expired terms that needs renewal. We'll address those items at a future meeting. Board action to appoint Mr. Clark and Pastor Walker to the Weems Board of Directors.
Pleasure to the board. Motion made by Commissioner Massey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
Item D, on February, Friday, February 24th, a 22-year-old man was arrested in the stabbing death of his mother while she was a patient at Capital Regional Medical Center. Mr. Cooper and Mr. Craig Gibson met with department managers early last week to discuss limiting and controlling access to patients and staff. I will say this, that was, it was very proactive on their part. Before I knew this incident even happened, they were calling me the following Monday, or Tuesday, and telling me that they saw it, and they realized that Weems needed this, to limit control to the hospital, to protect patients and staff. Below are the steps they will be implementing in the next few weeks. First thing they're going to do is at main entrance, as outpatient or visitors enter the front entrance, they will need to be seen by staff, will need to be seen by staff who will grant access through the secondary door via electromagnetic lock. Staff at the registration area and the nursing station will be able to buzz visitors and patients through. The triage room, some people that know the hospital well know how to gain access to the ER via the triage room without an escort. They'll be adding a keypad lock at that door. In the medical records section from the main car door, you need to go through two doors to enter the medical records. They'll be placing a keypad lock on the first door. Additionally, they'll be adding a safety glass window to the sec, to the second door, so that staff can see anyone that approaches the department. In the finance trailer, they'll be adding a keypad locks to two of the doors. The third door will be locked at all times as a matter of policy. And at the entrance portals, at both registration points, ER and the main entrance, as well as the purchasing department, will be keeping a vendor login, log-out journal. This will be required of everyone except staff, patients, patients, visitors, medical staff, and governance. If you have any questions regarding these items, let me know, and I'll have the appropriate staff contact you. I will say, I don't, some people might be, well, why are you telling them what they're doing? Because the public needs to know that henceforth, you just can't walk in the hospital anymore. But we know how some people deal with change, and they don't like it, and some people think they have rights that they don't have. So henceforth, know that there will be limited access to the hospital, and you might have to sign in or sign out, or you might not be admitted to that area at all. And that's, that's for the safety of staff and for the patients. And that's it for my Weems update. Item number two, City of Carabel is in the process of paving Northwest Avenue B as part of their commercial revitalization project. Commissioner Massey has approximately ten thousand dollars of local gas tax option tax funds remaining. And would like to use this money for the paving of Northwest Avenue B. Board action to approve the use of the L O G T funds. The reason I'm getting board action, usually, we use those funds when we do a grand paving project, paving project that we bid out. I don't think we've ever actually just, I guess in essence, transferred money to one of the cities before to help with paving. I'm not saying we can't do it, but I just need a motion enabled to allow us to do that.
I make a motion.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Lockley, any further discussion?
Carabel gonna put up the rest of it, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, you could either, a motion for each one separately, or do both. Below are two Dewberry proposals for professional services for board action. The first is a surveying, design, and permitting of a timber dock at Indian Point Park Fishing Pier. The new dock will follow the same footprint of a damaged, missing timber dock. This proposed fee will be paid from the FEMA P W zero-two-seven. And item number B, the second is a project that consists of surveying and permitting of a F D O T connection at the north side of the intersection of Thirteenth Street and U S Highway ninety-eight. This will create an entrance to the Chapman Building from U S Highway ninety-eight, and will be paid from your professional services budget. Item B is the entrance, our own entrance off of ninety-eight into the Chapman Building, because we are going to have to give the charter school back-
Their property.
Their property where we enter through Fourteenth Street. Especially with new school securities, school security efforts, that's, we gotta give that back to them.
Where is Indian Point Park at? Is that Indian Creek?
Probably Indian Creek, that's where it was torn up, Clay, correct, right? Yeah, that's where it was torn up, and FEMA paid for that money.
Okay. Pleasure of the board on those two items.
I just took that out, just professional services.
What happened to Indian Creek?
The one dock was torn up, and FEMA gave us money back for it.
That was from a storm, sir?
From a storm, hurricane, yeah.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? We're addressing items A and B.
On B, the Chapman Building, when they, when they put, how far we, when they put the start of?
Well, that's, right now, they're gonna do everything, and after that, you know, we'll probably go out for bids for construction. I could, I hate to put Clay to the spot, I can ask him an estimate how long he thinks, once we start advertising, after advertising, how long you think it's the project will take? I know, I hate to do that to you, but-
Clay Kennedy with Dewberry. I don't know, Commissioner, I mean, it's not a lot of work. Basically, what we'd be proposing is a D O T curb cut for the existing F curb. You'd have to redo some sidewalk, and what we're planning right now, we're just taking it to the right away. So it'd be concrete entrance up to the right away.
Yeah.
I mean, it wouldn't take them long to construct. I see it as possibly, I can't remember what the county's bid threshold is, but getting three estimates and picking the lowest one out of that. So a Jason White-type contractor should be able to handle that. And within a month or so, have it, have it ready. The problem's gonna be the D O T connection permit.
Yeah.
We have this problem in Commissioner Sanders' district right now, where, and just for your information, she just gave me a response from Mr. Michele from F D O T that says that what we submitted was unreadable, so we have to resubmit. So that process is taking longer than it should. So I don't wanna get nailed down to a timeframe, because once I submit the D O T permit, it's out of my hands as far as timely response back.
Well, whenever, whenever they get it done, I mean, it'll be a good thing, 'cause we won't be infringing on the other two people. You know, you got the school, and then you got the city. So it's best to have your own.
Yeah, and one thing, the chairman, I always had concerns about was to make sure it's not a narrow, it's a full wide street cut. So someone could come in and come out at the same time.
Yeah, and the other concern is, you got a stoplight right here, and now you want a curb cut a block away, so I'm wondering how they're gonna, D O Ts gonna react to that? Because there's no way to put a turning lane in or anything.
But you're doing it, if you look, you're doing it on the south side of ninety-eight already. There's a road at-
That's correct.
Thirteenth and Fourteenth on the south side, so I understand that, and yes, that is a concern. But I don't think that they can stop it, in my opinion.
Okay. We do have a-
It'll be big enough for an eighteen-wheeler to go in there.
Yeah, I know what you're concerned is a trailer for Dr. Sanala, yes, if it's wide enough, because an eighteen-wheeler could turn down on Thirteenth Street on the south side, so yes, sir.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, it's Mr. Lastran, it's working on the state's approval of the sublease for the new Extension Services Office at the Robert Howard Building. Staff would like to proceed with advertising for design, engineering, and construction administration services for this renovation project. Staff is hoping that once the sublease is signed by the state, we'll be in a position to move forward with the construction phase of the project. So we wanna run the ads, do the review, have the selection, and we'll be sitting there waiting so that we could, you know, move. Rather than doing this afterwards, we can be moving forward with that project.
Pleasure of the board. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley. Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Item five, inform the board that Mr. Rick Watson, a tax collector, I have to change something here, thank you, Lord, will start on March fifteen issuing driver's licenses from his office. Residents will be able to renew their license or obtain their first license, which requires passing the driving road test. Division of Motor Vehicles requests two dedicated parking spots for the road tests. One will be in front of the courthouse, and the other will be in front of the annex. I'll ask Mr. Howard Neighbors to post a restricted parking sign in front of these two parking areas. And I will say, a concern from the clerk is to make sure that the limited customer parking that directly in front of the courthouse won't be one of those, because you're gonna have two handicapped spots there, which leaves you with six, yeah, so-
And to have another spot empty most of the time, preserve the driving test, just to prepare the public. So for our idea, I guess a good idea, do it back somewhere back behind the public defender for the other service spot.
Yeah, and the annex one will be right up here, up front. So they will start the test there, when they park there, and they will end here. They don't do parallel parking anymore, straight line parking, I think is the term that they use, so that'll be that. Item number six, the board opened request for proposals for the renovation of the public defender's office at your last regular meeting. There was only one proposal submitted, which was from Oliver Sperry Renovation of Tallahassee. Their price was above the budgeted amount for this project, so staff and Mr. Doug Schuler, the project architect, are in process of changing the project scope to bring the cost on the budget.
How much over budget was it, Mike?
Quite a few thousand. I'll get that number for you and tell you exactly, but I know it's credit. Because it's basically being reduced to making sure we do the, convert the bathroom to A D A, and a couple other things. But they wanted the office sectioned off, and a couple of things, and things with the roof, we can't do that.
No local bided?
No, sir. Remember, when we opened him, it was just, actually, the same person bided for the one repairs at Weems, where someone drove into the emergency room, that back deck, and this one, nobody else bided, you know? Again-
Local contracting industry is full of-
They're working now, there's pulling permits, building houses, and so they're not interested in these type of jobs right now, as they were maybe a few years ago. Item number seven, remind the board that we're still seeking new members who are planning a zoning commission. We've had two members stepped down from the commission for various reasons, one moved away, and the other one for a job. So we don't have enough members to meet our formal requirements. So if one person doesn't show up, we're back to having to cancel that meeting and then move all the agenda items to the next meeting. And item number eight, remind the board that Camp Deport Johnson Parade is this Saturday in Carabel. Parade lineup is nine forty-five A M., and the parade starts at ten forty-five. And the fire chief already did the whole thing about the rib cook-off, so I don't need to do that, and that ends my report.
Mike, on item number seven, could you send out something to the commissioner's iPad that lets us know who is currently on the planning and zoning board?
Okay.
Along with the names of the two members that have stepped down? And what categories need to be refilled on that?
I will.
If it's that large, if it's, you know, whatever the category that needs to be filled.
Can I, that, I have a question? Since they don't have a, since they shot, and did a holding people, couldn't we handle that, I would say? Till they get-
I would hate to put him on the spot, but I'll defer to our attorney about that one.
Not for your land building regulations are presently written, not even opposed to bypass, but in a certain process, but the board wants me to create that option for you, I think we're gonna have to do so. But as presently written, it needs to be passed in a certain-
I meant what I'm saying is, who knows how long you're gonna take to fill these positions? And if it's taking a while, you're holding up people. That's my thing.
We have a meeting scheduled for a week from today, and I'm gonna emphasize to all the current members that they all need to show up so we can have a meeting and see what, how that works out.
And if you can get that information out of the question, you send out to the commissioner, we'll try to work on getting those spots filled.
Yeah, because we don't need to bypass that.
We really don't, because it provides the public more of an opportunity to speak on different issues.
Remember, there was a gentleman here the other day about deprocess, that's what we're talking about, deprocess.
Any other, yeah, any other comments from Mr. Marone? We'll move on down the agenda.
Oh, I have something.
Okay.
I have something. Clay, if you don't mind, come on back up here, and let's discuss this about Georgia Street out at Atlanta. And let this get straightened out, see what we need to do. This is the second time that gentleman has held us up on projects within the county, both of them at Atlanta. So let's, Clay?
And I apologize, I don't know the, remember the exact date that we submitted a connection permit for Georgia? But I want to say that it was either December, maybe first of January, somewhere-
December.
Mid-January, somewhere in there, so. And I, and again, I apologize for not having my homework done, but I don't know if we did the permit app, gave it to the county to submit, or which way it was done. I think it was that way. Either way, Mr. Michele at D O T, and you had asked me his title earlier, and I'm not trying to call the man out. Michele Williams, he's the Maintenance Manager of Permits, that's his title on his email. He claims to miss Whitney, that as he discussed earlier with Clay Kennedy-
He hadn't discussed anything?
Uh, the package was submitted in a format that's unreadable. So I don't know what that entails, I'm gonna, when we leave here, I'm gonna go do some homework and try to figure out what the issue was and get it resubmitted.
I don't have a problem with it, but the board needs to remember that we had to write a letter to his superior one time before, because he sat on a permit out at Atlanta for Spring Street, and would have let it go. Now, Georgia Street, this is the second permit that we've had to get to that, because the first permit was approved by the state, but yet we had some different contractors, let's not go over that. But anyway, now we've got a different, we're still gonna have to go, it's been permitted before. It's been within a year that it's been permitted before, okay? I don't see what the problem is, it's unreadable, he's saying?
The information that was submitted was unreadable.
Here's my problem, this thing was submitted sometime in December, let's give them the benefit of the doubt, let's say January. So when staff sends him back an email saying, what's the status? And I'll tell you what, what, what Miss Whitney does, Miss Cole, that's not her married name, I'm sorry. What she does now, where she sends him an email, she copies his boss. So then now he sends back months afterwards and says, oh, it's unreadable. He could have sent us that email the day we sent it to him and say, guys, I received this, it's unreadable, could you send it over to change the format, whatever? And that's what we run into all the time with this, this-
Okay, I'm gonna do a motion that we contact F D O T and let them be aware of this situation about permitting issues down here in Franklin County to do with D O T. Because I can tell you, Donnie Phillips did it a mini-a-day, and Clay, you know I'm right on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Donnie Phillips did it a mini-a-day for F D O T, and you never did have a holdup on that. He knew these projects had to get off, had to get off, I mean-
We would have had Thirteenth Street by now, and I mean, and I mean, with y'all submitting, with Donnie here.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we contact F D O T and let them know what permitting problems we're having down here.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, we have a second by Commissioner Lockley, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Anything else from Mr. Marone from the board? Next, next on the agenda will be Mr. Michael Schuler, County Attorney, report.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report from the board.
No report from the county attorney, next on the agenda will be commissioners' comments.
I have one thing I wanna share with y'all. The, our boys didn't make it as far as they wanted to, the Seahawks varsity basketball team, but they did make it to the regional final, which going into the season, I don't think any of them thought they'd make it that far. We are actually able to host it. I know we had a team when we first became a solid day-to-day school that went all the way to state for varsity basketball, but they never hosted a regional final like we were able to do this year. So just to thank the community for all the support for our kids, because they are our future.
Any other commissioner comments? Meeting adjourned.
Let me just, I'll get a point for just a second, I just wanna get a read from the board on something. So when I go down there, I don't wanna overstate the situation, and I sort of don't wanna say it in a kind of threatening manner, but I feel like I, I feel like I should remind the residents down there that if the county runs out of the Ballpoint Trust Fund, and the road gets damaged in some format, the county is not obligated to have a paved road down there. And if we don't have enough money to fix that road, you know, another section of the road may be lime rock for an extended period of time. I mean, so I, I mean, I just, you know, I just, we don't have a budget down there for maintaining that road except for the Ballpoint Trust Fund, and when that runs out, you know, that's the message I feel strongly about, the public realizing that there has to be some way of helping to maintain that road, because our normal budgeting process does not include, you know, excess of money for a single road.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Alan, you're going down there representing the board. You tell them what you feel like you got to tell them. I mean, you know, you dealt with them longer than what I have. So, I mean, just be honest with them.
Well, that's what I wanna do, all right.
But, and that's what I said, now, my whole, my whole thing, and we can say that underneath the mission comments, my whole thing is, we agreed to up to twenty thousand dollars for a study that we thought was gonna bring numbers, and now they're saying a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, Alan, we ain't, we not gonna never have no money to keep, in a coffin to keep that road, but we don't know, you know, you have a storm every year.
Well, unless it's a funding source, like a toll road, or some, or some funding mechanism to generate revenue down there, Commissioner, you're exactly right, that's why it's important, because if somehow the road gets damaged, and we run, and the Ballpoint Trust Fund runs out, then your road department and your adware of tax base of the whole county is gonna be trying to support a very expensive road. That's what I'm trying to avoid happening.
I just wanted to say, I'll look into whether the state can take over that road. I know that's a huge issue, but let's just for a little homework, do that.
Can I get a motion and a second on that?
Yep.
Meeting adjourned.